All right. Let's call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order Marine City Fire Department, August 6, 2027 PM. Can please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And let's all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Bryson's not here. It's a right in the absence this evening. Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Here.
City manager love.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Jacob Bryson.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. This is a time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary.
Can I, uh, can I speak?
Go ahead.
It's Patrick Phelan. Go ahead.
Uh, Patrick Phelan, for one night, so, behalf of BMJ Engineering, just wanted to, I know you're considering the, uh, the engineering proposals, uh, tonight. Also wanted to congratulate the mayor on your victory and, uh, just if there are any questions, feel free to ask.
Patrick, uh, the signal came through, uh, wasn't very strong. Uh, just wanted to reiterate and make sure I understood what you said, uh, just that you wanted to address any questions regarding the proposal and congratulating, uh, Dave Vannenbosh for the county commissioner position.
Yep. That's correct.
Okay. Um, if by any chance you can go to somewhere where maybe you have a better cellphone signal, if we have any questions for you, uh, later in the meeting when we get to the RFP, that might be helpful.
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Pat.
Yeah. I will, uh...
I think we lost you, Pat.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none. Moving on to approval of the City Commission minutes, July 16, 2020.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through H.
Support.
Motion support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to financial business expenditures, including payroll, $695,288.79.
Make motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $695,288.79.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Moving on to preliminary financial statements. I need a motion to receive and file.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to 2020 recreation millage dispersment. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on this? This is an annual that we have to do?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the actuarial service contract. We need a motion to approve.
Um, may, may I explain this just a little first? Uh, this is a contract for the actuarial for the pension, uh, retirement system. This is something that's required to be done every year. This is a contract that Nihart has put together for us. It can be done one of two ways. So you can either approve it, uh, just for a one year, and that would be for a not to exceed 10,000 plus 3,000 for each occurrence for a benefit calculation. Or you can approve this as an open-ended contract as a consultant, and just approve them as our consultant. You'll find that one of the things that they put into this contract is that these fees will carry through year after year, subject to a annual adjustment not to exceed Consumer Price Index for inflation, approximately about 3% per year.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve it in one or the other, correct?
Correct. It would either be to, uh, utilize them as the consultant or to approve one-year contract with them.
What did we pay the last time we had one done? Different, was it this company or a different company?
Uh, we, this would be the second year we've been using this company, and it's up about 3%.
Okay.
Right now, there's no benefit to actually have it open-ended, though, if it's the same percentage as...
You'd have to approve the contract every year if we didn't, which next year would be 3%.
So what's the pleasure of the, the board? So I just need a motion one way or the other.
What happened? Do you use them for anything else during the year, ever?
No.
So... I would just do a one-year.
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion that we do this for one year at 10, 10,000.
Support. Plus, plus the 300 for each occurrence for calculation.
Plus that.
Any questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to the request for engineering proposals.
So you have before you the bid tab sheet for the four companies that we received bids for engineering services. Uh, that includes BMJ, Wade Trim, Project Control Engineering, and Spicer Group. We also included the summary sheets of the fees for your consideration. Uh, the next step potentially for you could be to bring in all or some of the firms for interviews, or if you were comfortable enough making a choice this evening, that would also be an acceptable decision. I would, I would recommend probably selecting some or all of the firms to bring in an interview.
Well, what would you like to do?
I'm gonna bring in the top two.
Who, now, but who, uh, who are the top two, then? Did you, did they have any preferences from the city staff at all on...
So one of the considerations that you had talked about previously is, uh, Wade Trim we've been utilizing, and you're concerned about some of the higher costs with that firm. Um, the two firms that are lower than them are Project Control Engineering and BMJ. But obviously, cost is not the only basis. You want to make sure that they'll have adequate staffing and abilities to be able to address anything that we might have in the future for any work for them to do. So, um, it really is up to you and your comfort level, what it is that you're looking for.
Elaine, have you had any feedback from anybody, from any other communities, on any of them?
I, I have not, no. Uh, I'm familiar with all of these firms. I think that probably any of the firms that we select would be more than adequate for the needs that we have. Obviously, there's a couple local firms, uh, that being BMJ and Project Control Engineer, Spicer Group's out of Saginaw, and Wade Trim's out of Detroit. Um, Wade Trim and Spicer Group are two of the more pricier ones. Uh, they do have information about who the staff would be assigned to us, and, um, for Wade Trim and Spicer Group, it is more of the higher-level people, but you do kind of get what you pay for.
The Project Control Engineering Group does a lot of work for a lot of the locals in here. They're already doing work for Clay and a lot of the areas around here, so, you know, I mean, I'd like to stick with a couple of the local ones.
Uh... Project engineers, I work with them already, so is there a problem if, if I have to vote on it?
No.
Because they, they do the Baltimore, and they do, uh, and they did Algonquin, I worked there, and I didn't have any problems with them.
Yeah.
And they're local.
You're, you're, you're okay to vote on this.
Why don't we then bring in, uh, if, any objections from any, uh, BMJ and, uh, Project Control Engineer for interviews?
Yeah. I'd agree with that.
I'll support it.
Anybody else have any issues or...
Is there some advantage to, no, I don't, but I just have a question. Is there some advantage to the fact that Wade Trim, I mean, we've got some history with them. I mean, they've got some background on us. I mean, what would it take for these, for some, one of these other companies to, um, one of these other firms to get caught up with us? I don't know. It's...
From an engineering perspective, not that much, because most of the engineering is project-based. So typically, what we use them for are doing some of the design work for roads, uh, doing some grant work, like we worked with Tetra Tech for the Saw Grant, uh, we're working with Wade Trim for the grant for the water consolidation study, so that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Project engineer got the Saw Grant for Algonquin. They, they work in that period, too, as I was gonna say. I've worked with them before, but it's up to you guys.
But if, uh, nobody has any objections, we'll just bring those two in then for, uh, interviews, or at least discussion?
No. I can contact them and work on scheduling for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's move on then to, uh, request for proposals for Bell and West St. Clair Street improvements.
So Wade Trim did the bid specs, and the numbers for paving and doing the infrastructure projects came in well below what was planned and budgeted. Uh, we budgeted 500,000 for the project. The, uh, bids came in around 300,000, which is significant savings. Uh, the recommendation from Wade Trim is to award the bid to Murray Underground in the amount of 301,130 dollars, with a contingency amount of 35,000 for any unforeseen circumstances.
And we have used Murray before on, uh, some of our emergency stuff, too, haven't we? Did they do the, was it West, uh, the Mary? Mary project?
In South Elizabeth, too.
Mm-hmm. So can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the Bell Street and West St. Clair Street bids for Murray Underground at 301,130.
Support.
With the contingency of 35...
With the contingency of the 35,000.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it?
Um, if we get this done, when are they gonna start?
Uh, I thought that you had something in here that they were gonna be able to start pretty much immediately.
Ooh.
So I'll, I'll confirm that and let everyone know.
Um, the only question I have, because I know somebody contacted me over on, um, Bell Street, is are they gonna take all those trees out when they widen this?
They're gonna try and save as much as they can.
Okay. Because that was a concern.
Yeah. I'm sure some unfortunately will not be able to be...
I think they're all kind of in a row, so I don't, I didn't know how he was gonna try to widen on each side, and they're gonna be affected, because there isn't a whole lot of room there.
There are.
Yeah. That's the bad part.
Yeah.
All right. We got a motion and support. Any other questions on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to city manager, city managers' evaluation timeline.
I've worked on getting this prepared and just looking for approval of this timeline. Um, one thing I'm not sure if it is necessary is to have a closed session on the 20th to discuss my self-evaluation. I don't know if you want to just do that all at the same time with the closed session when we review all the results together.
Isn't that up to, it's your decision, isn't it her decision, whether she wants it in open or closed?
It's, she holds the key to close the room.
No, I'm, I'm just asking if you want to do the separate discussion of my self-evaluation or if you want it just rolled into one closed session.
The same day.
Yeah.
But I think the point was, I mean, unless you're gonna give us a hard copy, okay, because that was...
It's a tool for us.
It was a tool for us.
Yeah. You'll, you'll be getting that with the next packet.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys want to have that closed session as well, or if you just want to formulate your response based on my self-evaluation, and then we review all of that together in just one closed session. Streamline it a little.
Well, unless there's something that you want to add to it, to us, or if somebody has questions, I guess.
And they could bring it to her on an individual basis, too.
So it's up to you guys. Just wanted to throw that out there as an option to save a little bit more time.
I'm, I'm fine with bidding a hard, you know, getting a copy from you and just going from there.
Is everyone else pretty good with it?
If we have questions, please ask. Go, if you have questions, please, yeah.
All right. We'll, we'll strike out that closed session for the...
Other than that, we're good, that's correct. That's all you needed, right?
Yep.
Everyone's good with the timeline? No issues?
So are we going... Are we, are you, are we gonna get that?
It'll, it'll go out with the packets next week for your next meeting.
Okay.
So you'll have that. And then you'll work on doing your evaluations and submit those to Lisa or Wendy September 1st.
Mm-hmm.
And then September 7th, I'll get the copy of everything compiled.
Perfect. All right.
And then September 17th, we'll have the closed session evaluation.
Everyone good with this? Okay. Moving on to, next page. Wastewater treatment plant pump. First one, if we do move on, we're gonna need a wave of competitive bids, and then a second motion for the actual purchase.
Correct. So Mike went out and did solicit to get three bids for the grit pump, uh, or three quotes for the grit pump, and his recommendation is to go with the HESCO quote in the amount of 15,780 dollars, um, and then also a $5,000 extra for any unforeseen...
Contingency.
Yeah. Yep. So that would be approving it for a total of 20, not to exceed 20,780 dollars, which is well under the 32,000 that he budgeted.
So we did get three quotes on this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we waive competitive bidding for the grit pump.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on waiving of the competitive bids? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll make the motion that we approve the quote that we got from the HESCO company of 15,780 with a $5,000 contingency, so it's not to exceed 20,780 dollars.
Support.
Any questions on that? I do. I have one. What's a grit pump?
So a grit pump is something that, um, helps filter out all of the grit that comes in from the influent. So grit, you have to think about it being things like sand...
And sediment.
Um, yeah. Road waste. Also, there's organic grit, um, eggshells, coffee.
Any form of suspended solid in, in the waterfall.
Okay.
How's that?
Just, very good.
Suspended solid. I'm getting a visual.
Not all suspended solids, though.
Suspended solids.
Not, not toilet paper, not that kind of stuff.
I don't wanna hear anything from Hannibal over there.
All right. All right. All right.
Apple bean?
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Yeah, Mike's got a lot of letters in here.
I know. He's a hard-working guy.
He's the entire new business secretary.
I see that. All right. We're moving on to pavilion lighting.
So one of the concerns that was brought to my attention about the pavilion is that we don't really have either good lighting or handrails to be able to protect people from the, um, the seawall at night. So Mike kind of took a look at the area and assessed what he thought the best option would be, and he felt that lighting mounted on the pavilion would be the best option. Uh, he's presented a type of LED pack that is light-sensitive, so it should turn on at night and turn off during the day. Uh, the quote that he received from Sideline Electric for the parts and installation is 1,900 dollars. I realize it's under the amount, but I just wanted to bring this before commission for your approval, because there, there are options that we could do here. We could put handrails in versus lights, and, and that's the thing that he thought was the best option, was the lights, and, and the least costly.
Are they going, are they going to face the river, or...
Yes. I, I think they're gonna be like a little bit down.
Downward angle.
Okay. Because I think we did, we did get something on the lighthouse when we first put a light up from the Coast Guard, saying the ships didn't like it, because they...
You just have to have it just down a little bit.
Shielded.
Yeah. Okay. I just wonder which way they're gonna be going.
It's just that night, with the water so high, it's hard to tell where land stops and the water starts, so you don't want to...
Especially when they're pretty much even.
Yes. It's really bad.
Like an infinity pool.
Yes.
All right. So...
So we're just looking for approval for this.
We don't have to waive anything, because it's under. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the quote from Sideline Electric for 1,900 dollars to complete the lights and a GFI outlet.
Motion support. Any other questions on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Vannenbosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we're moving on to 2,000 Pelican sweeper.
So as you all know, he has had ongoing problems with this sweeper, and it's not the best piece of equipment that he's got, uh, but it is something that we have, and he has invested a lot of money to keep this up and running. However, we've gotten to a point where now it has a little more costly repair. Uh, I know at one point in time, we were kind of looking at whether we wanted to purchase a new sweeper or not. Uh, I talked to Mike about that. Uh, he doesn't necessarily want to go buy a new wiper, so we, or I'm sorry, a new street sweeper, so we talked about the potential of either leasing or purchasing a used one. Uh, we do know that, uh, St. Clair recently purchased a used one. Uh, I spoke with the manager up there, and if we do not want to fix this sweeper, that's something that they would potentially be open to loaning out to us for the rest of the season if we wanted to look into purchasing a new one. Um, it is 20 years old, and as I said, it's had quite a few issues over the years and a number of repairs. This one is, is pretty costly relative.
It's an understatement.
Yeah. And, and the functionality of it isn't the best. Um, obviously, in those 20 years, the, the specs for them have improved, so they're more efficient now.
What kind of deal did St. Clair get?
Um, I think it was around 130.
Okay.
Yeah. Still, still a pretty expensive piece of machinery. It's something I think that they offer lease-to-buy terms. I think that's what St. Clair did, was a lease-to-buy. So it's one of those things where you buy out at the end with a dollar, but I can confirm that. Um, but just wanted to bring this to your attention. Do we want to invest this 6750 to fix this arm, or do we want to explore some other options?
Do, do we...
Is it you could test one for a while?
Uh, no.
Demo.
Good.
I thought I heard the word loan.
I use demo.
Well, St. Clair, they let us use it.
They would loan you one to, to...
They, they recently purchased one, and they, they would be open. Obviously, we'd have to discuss terms.
You know, that shared resources is working in other communities, um, it's something to look into.
Yeah. And there is actually some grant funding for shared resources.
Well, you get a bean in your column with the governor's office if you, well, I'm sorry, I said that.[1598.12]
And there is actually some grant funding for shared resources.
Well, you get a bean in your column with the governor's office if you, well, I'm sorry to say that. What offended you more, the bean or the governor?
Yeah.
So what I'm saying though is the governor's office promotes these shared resources. You do, they do look favorably on communities.
Right. And there were some grant programs with the shared resources.
And so if you entered into maybe some sort of cooperative agreement, two or more governments are always free to do what one can do alone and it's sanctioned by the Constitution. It's sanctioned by the inter-local agreements, languages and all the statutes. You might be able to put something together that benefits both communities.
Yeah, I think I'd rather do that than waste money on this thing.
We could at least look into it.
Yeah, maybe hold off on this repair until we can get some numbers back from St. Clair.
Because this thing is so bad and it leaves more dirt than it picks up, so it's like.
It's lived, it's life.
Mike says it sort of just blows the stuff around. It's not a.
You can always tell when he's been through.
It's like a relocater. Just relocate, just relocate.
I would like, I would like to note it, it does do a little bit of pickup, you know, 300 yards in the season from April to November.
If everyone's good with it, before we get off onto a major tangent, can we just, can we maybe?
Direct me to work with St. Clair to see what kind of options we have for sharing.
Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Sure, I will do that.
All right. Yeah, it's my turn. Dyke Security Monitoring Agreement.
This is a contract where we are just consolidating our existing service agreements into an annual agreement. There's no cost increase or anything. It's really just a matter of housekeeping. So I'm sure you've seen through the years with our invoices that we get hit every single month and you see all the different locations and everything that it hits. This is making it so that we're just going to have to deal with one bill a year and it'll be a lot easier from a accounting perspective.
They'll just break it all down on one bill?
Yeah.
And they could get a little bigger font.
I know.
For their presentation?
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Need a magnifying glass to read it?
Well, we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion that we approve this new agreement with Dyke Security to combine all our stuff. Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city managers' report.
We are still waiting to hear from Eagle as to whether they would allow the kayak launch to be posted or mounted in the Bell River. They're asking Mike for more information and details and cutaways about where it's going to be mounted. So he had provided it to them, apparently not to this particular person. So we're still working on that. We put an application in for the first responder hazard pay premium for the police officers. The columbarium has been installed.
I was there.
Yes.
Looks good.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll be able to start selling units in that and the sales from those units would be able to fund future units.
I thought you were just kind of hoping that we would fill it. I'm like.
Let's see, bids for City Hall for the trades are due on August 18th. That's electronically through the system that the architect has set up. The ribbon cutting for the parklet is scheduled for next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., so hopefully we can get everyone out there. The final piece of the puzzle, the water fountain, was installed a couple of days ago. We have a couple of contracts that are set up for an auto renewal and have no issues with the existing companies. Our Sludge Holler, Michigan Agribusiness, and then Clemms, who is through Oakland County for the police. Did you guys want to get an update on the elections from Chris at all?
How'd they go?
Despite having a problem with a piece of our equipment, everything went really well. We had a good turnout. I pulled some numbers from the last primary in 2016. We had 225 S and T ballots. This time we had 658, so nearly tripled. We had 614 voters in total in 2016 and this time we had 1,109.
Awesome, very good.
Good.
Very, very good.
The state put out a big pitch to get, have people volunteer as election workers because some of the older people didn't feel comfortable. So we were lucky enough to get eight new workers.
Awesome.
And they were really great and worked really hard. All the election inspectors worked really hard and Deputy Clerk, Michelle Littich, did too as well. She heard a lot this election, so. And everyone was super positive coming in. I think two people didn't wear masks. Everybody else wore masks, very respectful of the election. Nice to see a good turnout.
Any changes or anything you want to see for the next, for November?
Yeah, I'm going to use that office right there.
We'll get it ready for you.
It's necessary.
I offered it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's ready for you. We may have to get some junk out of there.
For those that don't.
Just remind us of the week before, would you?
For those that don't know, one of the complications is with the registration day of election, it presents a problem because you have to have the clerk available to do that. So really what we're going to be doing is having the remote office in the same location because when there are issues, she needs to be here. She can't be in two places at one time. So that way it'll keep her from having to run back and forth.
I think I made eight trips back, eight to 10 trips back and forth.
It has to be the clerk.
Yeah, it has to be.
And it provides better service to the residents because they don't have to wait in one location or the other.
Yeah, they could come in here and, you know, want to register and then they send them over to City Hall so we can do it all in one spot. So I think that will be a real help.
It won't take us long to get it ready for you.
That's right.
Is there anything you're going to need for it communication-wise? Wi-Fi is good enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem. Anybody have any questions for the city manager or the clerk?
Yeah, I would like to know what our code enforcement, what's his hours and what are we doing with the grass? Down on the corner of Woodward and Mary Street, a resident had to go down there and cut the trees that are hanging over the right, over the sidewalk. So you would write, because you walk down to the playground and down to Washington, like. Just a lot of tall grass I've seen around and I just don't know how we were doing that.
There are no set hours for the code enforcement officer. We pay him for 10 hours a week and he sets his own hours and goes out and does the field inspections.
And then who gets the list to cut grass?
We have someone in the office that sends those letters out based on the list that he compiles.
And then it gets cut within a time.
I'm sorry, what was?
Then it gets cut within a timely manner?
Correct, and if it doesn't, then we'll be the ones going out and cutting it. But we have to remember, it's eight inches.
Well, this is well than eight inches.
I've made a note of it and I'll make sure he looks into it. Thank you.
They cut the bowl over, but not the other side.
Elaine, is there any, we, at the last meeting, we approved, was it a jazz band to be in one of the parks? Has that happened?
I'm not sure if they've had any performances or not.
I haven't heard that they've been there. They asked for a lot of dates and said he was going to try to work it out where they could use some of those dates, so. I'll let him know that he's approved and I don't know if he's been there yet.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything either. All right. I wish our parks would be used for, you know, that kind of stuff because the music in the parks, especially now, I mean, people just love to be outside. Algonack is rocking, St. Clair is rocking. You know, it's just nice to sit outside and listen to some music or whatever, you know? Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, we're going to move on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Cheryl, you got anything for us today?
No, I do not. I'm good.
Paul?
Just congratulations on your win for St. Clair County Commissioner. Other than that, I really don't have anything new to report.
As the planning commission, they've got something coming up where we're going to have to look at, I think, approximately eight or nine houses over on DeGurcy in Metropolis. So that's what's coming up, the new housing around here. And I can see the two buildings that we approved on the planning commission a few months ago on DeGurcy, they're both going up, so.
Anything else?
Just to congratulate you and we'll miss you.
I still got five more meetings. Not that I'm counting, Chris.
No, I have nothing this evening except for congratulations and, yeah.
Commissioner Flossin said, well, we'll miss you. You've got five more, but.
Yeah, we can torture for you, we can torture you for those five.
That's.
All right, the only thing I have is I just want to encourage again, any local contractors, please put in bids for our building. We have flooring, siding, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, painting, you name it, we have it. We want everybody that's out there that can put in a bid locally to put them in. Go to the city site, the information's there. I posted on the St. Clair County site. But I'll try to get it on some more of the other Facebook pages locally here, but hopefully that we'll get more and more contractors to put in for this because I think they can do us a better job and they can do it for a better value. And that's it.
Bobby, you got any?
Actually, I do.
Is it long?
No, no, I just wanted to follow up. I was working with the city manager on the, on some of the trash waste issues. Mterra, I met with the management and they have a new manager for you. They had a one week where there was nobody really in charge of your routes. I've worked with this gentleman before, Dan Garman. He's given me his email and his personal cell number. I passed it along to the city manager and he's trying right now, he was trying this morning, to join the Facebook group that's been rattling about the trash issues. And he's kind of a doer. This guy, I think you'll, you'll see some responsiveness. Things got out of, as the other manager for your community was fading out. I think Angelo lost track of him a little bit and things were falling through the cracks. So let me know subsequent meetings if you're hearing anything. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing else?
No, just closed session issue.
All right. I don't have a whole lot tonight. Actually, I don't have a whole lot. It's been busy a couple weeks for us, so thank Chris for giving another very, very good election. And we're the first to get results out in my district.
I think we were first. Were we first?
First or second? Because they came in pretty play and us came in really close and some of the biggest numbers, so. I mean, that's a, that's a good, really good thing for our community that we had high numbers. That's great to see. With that, that's all I have and the city commission may be going into closed session to meet with the city attorney to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, MCL 15.268H. There may or not, may or may or not be action upon returning to open session, so I do need a motion to enter into closed session.
So moved for.
Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Motion carries.